All right, let's go ahead and come to order. This is the recess regular meeting for January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Appreciate everyone coming here tonight. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off. If you need to carry on a conversation, a little whisper, please go ahead and take that outside. This was intended to be a quasi-work session tonight with the engineer for the sports complex and members of the recreation committee and commission, hopefully members of both the baseball and softball leagues, but it has morphed into additional items that will be taken up. But in any event, let's go ahead and begin by our invocation by Reverend Willie Jones and pledging beliefs led by Scotts.
Let us pray y'all coming to follow this afternoon with Thanksgiving. I will always be thankful for this opportunity. Again, we thank you for this beautiful city which now have given us as stewards. We pray for our constituents, all of the citizens here in the city of Scottsdale. We pray for this councilship. We need your guidance and your direction tonight. In Jesus' name, we pray everything can, amen.
All right, first item that we have is the, what amounts to a joint meeting between the city council and the recreation commission. We also have a representative here for B and A. Do we have folks from both the baseball and softball leagues here? Appreciate y'all being here. And I know we have some members of our recreation commission. I see Chase Pragman and Chris Brays and Mike McLeahney. Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you guys for being here. So why don't we go ahead and get a report from B and A about the status of construction? And then we'll lift the conversation off from there.
Good evening. Glad to be here and talk about the project. So we put together an agenda and I apologize for those in the audience. It's probably a little tough to read. We made it turn out so you guys can read it from your end a little easier. I guess primary things from our end, we want to make sure we cover tonight, just give you guys a brief update on the status of the project. Talk about some critical dates that we're working towards right now. And then cover a few decisions on some things we're trying to add into the project that really kind of get through direction. And then also start to cover some of the items that we know are hanging out there and things we want to try to get covered before you guys are ready to start using the fields. So I guess just kind of the first start, I wanted to point out some milestone dates. These are certainly open for discussion. Since this is a workshop, we'd like to certainly get feedback and make sure we make adjustments in our schedule as much as we can. So what we think we've heard is there's a tentative opening ceremony date for March fourteenth. So I guess for the first item in discussion, is there any comments or questions or thoughts about that date?
I think going to ask the softball, the baseball people about the date for the opening ceremonies, March fourteenth.
That's kind of what we looked at. We did. We go any later than that, then we were way behind. Actually, what actually going that far, we're two weeks behind.
Okay.
Will that be the joint opening ceremony for boys and girls, please?
Yes.
So with that date kind of written down, you know, we're trying to make sure our goal now is to make sure we try to push everything through and get it done so that that date is a success. So just some other milestone dates that we're putting down here. So the buildings, and we'll look at some pictures and stuff in a minute, but the buildings, so concessions, restrooms, the pavilion, everything. We're targeting a fourteenth of February date to essentially substantially complete those buildings so that the city can come in, start to look at them, occupy them, put equipment in and things like that. So that gives us with that March fourteenth date, a solid month for you guys to get in and make sure everything's up and running. So on opening ceremonies, you know, hopefully you can sell and buy concessions and put equipment in, that type of thing. So obviously there's going to be a decent amount of equipment that needs to go on. So we think that month gives us enough time to do that, but.
So man, that poses the question. So when you mentioned equipment, now this is, is the equipment purchase with the construction of the field? So we got to have ice machines and.
Yeah, so you have some relatively new ice machines that were there and moved out of the building. You know, so the idea was that the city tried to salvage as much that was operable and usable before we emove what was there. And so Kevin, I know you kind of think that decent amount already.
That's right. There's two ice machines planned to go back that were not, were fairly new. So they're dimension wise, they're set to go. We talked to Mike West about that. As soon as the building's ready to be occupied, we get those ice machines back over and get them worked up.
But then beyond that, yeah, I mean, there's shelving and other things like that. Certainly we need to start working on those. And so now, I mean, today, I know some, a group did come yesterday just to look in the buildings and see. So there's no reason we have to wait until February fourteenth to look and start to think about what you need so you can get it bought or moved if you're already on it. The fourteenth is kind of the day where we say, hey, contractors still going to have some special work to do, but you can come in and occupy at that point. So anyway, that's, you know, between now and fourteenth, certainly as much discussion as we can have with those that are going to be in charge of installing equipment, we're ready to go. Beyond the buildings, the fields are, what we're looking at is about February twenty-eighth. And so what that really means is from fences inside, fields are ready. For the most part, all of them except for two are close to ready. We're really just kind of waiting on weather and a few other things to get done. Fencing has started today and our hope is that they stay on and keep moving. So anyway, that's our, our goal there. The one exception is of course the championship field. We'll kind of look at that in a minute. And if you recall, that one field was held up from being started until all of the light bulbs get set. And we had some delays getting light bulbs in. So that one, I've kind of put a to be determined. We've got some discussion on some things that may impact the delivery of that field. We'll kind of talk about that in a minute. But that gives you six fields, you know, right now that are going to be up and ready to go. And then, then I guess beyond that, we're looking at a March sixth, kind of what I'm calling is the critical site work. So all the concrete paving, with the exception of the stuff right around some of the championship field we're shooting for having done, getting the installation of the bleachers, all, would I just say miscellaneous concrete plaza, the walk-in areas. And I think all of the shade structures, of course, March, I don't know how critical that's going to be, but the, all of them except for the championship field shade structures, those will all be up around the bleachers. So our hope there is with that schedule we're looking at, and if we can stay on it, that, you know, there's no problem with opening ceremonies. So anyway, you know, of course, we'll need to work out a lot of detail between now and then, but that's big picture where we are. I kind of put some notes down here. Of course, one of them looks like it's been resolved. So Power Company, man, that was on the agenda last night. They had sent in, you know, proposed costs to put the service point in. And between last night and now, that is now that's all. So that's on the agenda at a couple locations. The Power Company graciously agreed that they shouldn't be charging for the service that they said they were going to do. So yes, thanks for taking care of that. So that's just kind of big picture milestones. Any questions or discussion that anybody has added on that?
Other question, doing another activity, will those gate entrances be locked? Are they going to remain, remain open?
So once we get the fences up, yes, I mean, they will be locked and then it becomes an operations thing. I mean, you know, you guys will need to decide, does it stay locked, open? That's certainly a discussion. And frankly, I don't know who all is engaged in that, but we want to talk about that.
Councilor Jones, there are some areas outside of the fields that, the fields themselves are going to be able to be locked down, but you have green space on the southeast corner and on northwest corner. There'll be green space that'll be available almost like the city park area, sidewalks around it. But the fields, if chosen to be, can be locked off or where. They're not accessible.
Jackson Avenue, allegations this morning?
Actually, on Jackson Avenue, there is.
There's an entrance on Jackson.
There's a maintenance entrance there on the north side. That's it.
Yeah, we've got a maintenance gate.
Convent and then one on Tucker.
Yeah. So yeah, we've kind of looked at some pictures there. So, so this, this picture is just an overhead shot. This was actually yesterday. So you've got to get a visual of how things are coming together. So you can see you've got the three baseball, three softball fields turfed in. And then you can see they actually started putting the synthetic turf for the infield of the championship field. They started that yesterday. I don't know when, when do we think they're going to be finished with that?
It seems all over week process.
So within a week, the infield turf will be in, and then beyond that, they'll start turping the outfield of that field. So by March, that field's there. We just need time for the sod to grow in because it will, right now, there's not much growing. So anyway, that field will be there. And then of course, you can start to see, you know, it's kind of hard to look at. The contractor has been bouncing around installing concrete pavement where he can, working around lights, working around field install stuff. So that was a snapshot from yesterday. Just kind of run through a few of them. Again, this is kind of looking at the championship field and towards the baseball field. And then that's starting to look at towards where that convent entrance there on the west side of the park. You can start to see kind of where the drop-off circle is going to be, and that's a piece of the sidewalk that goes into the complex.
So all the work outside of the fields, when are you expecting all that to be done?
I mean, so we're targeting, you know, that was that critical stuff we're saying right now, that the rate and contractor needs trying to accelerate. March sixth, we're hoping to have all of the concrete work and site work in between the fences done.
So that's your green spaces done, your everything, your footings out.
That's right. The, you know, the areas outside of the, so like here, you're kind of looking at that southwest corner of the site and just a big triangular dirt shape. That may not be completely ready at that point in time. A lot of this is going to be weathered. And that area is called for seeding. So, you know, may have seed thrown out, but then you just may not have pure grass established. But you have lights, fences, everything's ready to occupy and start plating on at that point.
You know, that northwest corner where we proposed parking at one time, on this point, is that going to be seeded or is that going to be?
Yeah, that's seeded.
You know, the southeast corner where we have the, that's going to be green space and possibly put some backstops up for practice, training or stuff like that.
Yeah, and we're going to put some fencing, just some seconds of fencing, I think, up in that area. And then there's strips of sod that are going around all of the sidewalks just to make sure they don't wash. And beyond that, it's just, it's going to be seeded.
Looking at the Convent Street entrance, I remember some, some conceptual drawings that suggested there would be parking from, or from that Convent Street entrance, but I'm not, at least I'm not seeing it in the pictures that you've got here.
Correct. Yeah, and so we did draw in, and let's see if I can find a decent, I've got a great image of that. But we did draw in, you know, a parking lot that could be in that area. And I'm, sorry, I've got a great picture of that area, but in the contract, that's not in there, right?
I understand. I just, I just.
The area is graded out and prepped for, you know, a parking lot to get installed whenever that comes.
Okay, all right. Does anybody, and I'm not, I'm not including just the councils, anybody from the leagues, recreation commission? Anybody else have any questions for the engineers before we move on?
I'm not going to. You said the championship field is going to be a synthetic infield and thorough about field?
Correct. And so you can kind of start seeing, taking shape there. So basically where you see the gray, that's the rock. All of that is synthetic infield. And the idea there was that now, you know, it'll play the same for softball and baseball. So that way you can kind of get dual purpose out of that, out of that field.
Is there perimeter fencing going around the whole complex still or not?
Well, the answer is yes and no. So we're using some of the field fencing to kind of create a perimeter fence. So not, there's not going to be a totally separate perimeter fence around the entire block, if that makes sense. So, but you'll be able to lock off the site if you chose to, so that, you know, it would be difficult to get in and out of the complex.
Well, the question's been raised about what it goes to in the interim. When the field's going to a tournament play, when they want to drop the rock, hey?
And you can, and you can control that through two entry points or one if you wanted to keep one.
That's fine.
I realize, and I don't mean to jump ahead, and if you tell me you're going to talk about it, that's fine. Too early to talk in terms of where we stand in terms of budget versus what the actual expenditures will be?
No, I don't think it's too early. And really, my goal is just to kind of show you what we're doing, where we're at, talk schedule, and then kind of turn it over to, to that discussion.
All right, that's fine.
So, I mean, unless there's questions about kind of the start dates or, or, you know, when we're trying to move in, happy to kind of move on on the agenda on that front.
Stephen, just because he puts his picture up here, I'm going to go ahead and request that some of those live ups we get. I think we could possibly use several of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, to be, to everybody doing.
So I guess the, you know, the way to maybe start in that discussion is, I know here a few months ago, we came and talked about maybe the possibility of adding some things into the project as we start talking about signage and other enhancements. So as far as budget goes, you know, we've not, the budget hasn't changed in terms of what's been covered cost-wise since early latter, middle last year when we did the change work for the landscape. And so there's not been anything that's under contract to change that right now. There are some things on the item, on the list, talked about the cost, we increased that. And so we were, you know, if you talk about total project costs from, you know, property acquisition all the way through what's under construction right now, the number is around ten and a half million dollars. That's kind of what's set to be spent right now. And so, you know, we do have some stuff that could cost more money than that, or we can stay where we are.
I think I found the lighting contract, but I found one of the old quotes from Busco, so it was in that good, a one point five million?
Correct. And, and. That's right. And so, you know, what we ended up doing with that was the list and purchase. So you're not paying capital.
By the line will have twelve million dollars in it.
That's right.
Pretty much.
Yeah, by the time you pay that out or time, yeah, that's exactly right. So, so the couple of things that we were going to kind of talk about that may or may not impact budget. So the reason I, one of the reasons I put this up was this was the early rendering. So, you know, generally what you're seeing in there just from a high level was, was what was part of the budget. We do have landscaping, you know, in there. Obviously, the trees we're planting aren't all that mature. Some of them are existing trees. But the two things we were kind of wanting to hone in and make sure we cover tonight are the entryways and signage. And so this one depicts that baseball entry there off Tucker Street. And that was in the original contract. We got, after we got out there and started looking at it and actually figuring out what that was going to look like, we sort of sat back to the way, there may be a better way to address this, make it an entrance, an opportunity to put some signage in. And so we just wanted to cover that. I know we've had some discussions in the field with a few members to kind of see. And so our hope now is that what we do in that little circle is going to impact us being able to work concrete in that area. So we want to make sure that we get it in a clean direction. So this was kind of a revised concept of what that would look like. And we've, we've had a couple of images where we're showing a sign. We have put the words Pascal's Sports Flex on there. Naming is not something that we really are suggesting. That'll be something that you guys need to decide. We're just making sure the scale of it is, is there. So I guess one thing we want to touch off by is, is there a sort of a direction on that concept to do it or not to do it?
We can't use just the baseball because it's small and it's on ball.
That's right, that's right. So, you know, this concept has a sign that kind of, that looks just like that. This would still have the same kind of painting in there to, you know, for the ball. And then that was, there were been discussions about possibly having naming or even bricks. This still provides that opportunity in there. So what we want to try to do is figure out what direction on the head. Because if we're going to build a sign there, we've got to get the foundation in before we crawl that concrete around the road.
I personally like that design now. Once we put on the sign, long way to lay, I like that.
And we can, our goal is if you said, hey, we like the sign, we just don't know what we're going to call it apart, we can go ahead and build the foundation. And then, you know, we can build the sign and not put any letters on the sign until you guys decide. The, the lettering is in, already in the contract, so not to wait. But, but then we can at least get that sign installed so that we can finish everything around.
Can these tiles outside of there be sold as well?
They could be. And, and so this is where things get, you know, open for a lot of discussion, I guess. Obviously, selling, getting all that done in the next two months is just going to be very difficult. It takes a while to figure out that. Yes, that could be done. The question behind, what do we do in the interim when you may not have much of the bricks sold? So we can, there are options. We can just put mulch in that space and leave it like that until a bunch of bricks gets sold. You could sand set some bricks and then replace them over time. We've kind of got options there, really. That gets into that budget question because buying all the bricks, set them in there, that's going to cost, you know, above the on what we've got right now with contracts.
So you're talking about bricks, you're talking about where it says Pascal's Sports Complex in front of that, basically, right?
Yeah, you see that kind of white shape area on both ends, that's right.
I think, depending if I'm wrong, what you're talking about are outside of that, how you've got the concrete etched.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, the flatwork concrete around it.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, parents make these and we could maybe sell to corporations and businesses out there. Maybe not all of them.
That's just what we saw.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you can always come back in because those are generally five by five panels. We could always, you can come, cut one out and emboss something in there later. And then also, I don't know if you guys have called it, those brick pedestals around the corners are the memorial walls idea. So those are getting built. The idea was to kind of come up with some flat designs, see if we put names on those as well. So that's another opportunity to add, you know, sponsorship versus memorial information. And we took, you know, we documented all of the plaques and boards that were in the old complex. So we've got all those names, so none of those are going to get forgotten. So if we want, you know, somebody wants to come up with what of those, wants to go back where, again, that was the idea of trying to have those spaces available there too.
Are you talking about the names that were like on the wall or fame?
Yes, sir. So that, so I guess that sign is, you know, for us, kind of critical for, for us for now is if we think we'd like that and we know we've got some details to work out on bricks, papers and other things like that, so we've got time to work that kind of details out with some directions. But if you guys said, hey, we like that general concept, we can go ahead and get some of that sign put in there and that would be kind of cool.
So there's no wall, so there's no other wall that, there's no other wall other than these little columns?
Correct. I mean, right in this area, that's right.
Is there another wall anywhere?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. Any questions on, on that one? Yeah, yeah, and Kevin's got to point out a good point. So the cost of that sign is already budgeted in the building contract. There's no added cost to this. We just want to make sure that we get general clearance on the concept.
So that design other than the bricks, have a link budgeted in the, all the policy?
And Councilor Tipton, actually, just the bricks in front of the red brick band, the white area are the bricks that aren't figured in. The red band in front of the sign is in the, in the contract now.
Okay, so this kind of gets us to one of the other walls. So then this was part of the original concept. And so we just kind of brought that back in. And there's another sign, and this is on the Convent Avenue entrance. Same place, you know, again, Pascal's Sports Flex. So we've looked at some modifications to that sign, mainly just make it a little bit smaller. That, that sign right there, that's fifty feet long, so it's a little big. And so we just looked at a shorter version of that. Now, that one's a six-foot tall sign that's going to sit up behind that planter. And I know one of the things that we discussed a while back was, you know, wa, just walls, places for kids play wall ball, things like that. So that, on the backside of that wall is a big green space. It gives an opportunity for that kind of stuff to happen. So that, just wanted to make sure we pointed that out. Again, budget for the sign is in, we just want to make sure that this has been shown on renderings before. We just want to make sure that that general concept is still accepted.
Sure.
Okay, let me go back. All right. Is this the wall you were telling me about, memorial wall?
So the memorials, they'll be these individual columns.
And how tall are they?
Those are somewhere, I think those are right on six foot tall.
Six foot tall?
It'd be very similar to Oxford, like championship.
So I'm trying to get a, because they don't look very tall to me. So I'm trying to get a.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, you know, tall enough, thirty inch by thirty inch.
I think that sitting wall is like two foot, two, three.
Yeah, yeah, it's eighteen inches on one side and forty inches on the other. That's right. Yeah, so I mean, it's, you know.
I'm just trying, that doesn't look very big.
Yeah, I know.
But they also have lights and stuff on each side on each child to kind of present it to you.
And you said the sign on this is six feet by?
Thirty feet.
Do you have any kind of, uh, wrong, anything about Florida's parking? I've got a lot of concerns concerned about the parking. You got that for you?
Yeah, so well, the plan going into this, and it's still the plan right now, is the parking's still going to occur. When we open right now at the high school parking, so there on Tucker Street, still where all the parking's going to be set up. We, we drew some options for parking to go. They just never got put into the contract, mainly because of budget.
You have an ideal, I mean, vehicles, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so we did, early on, we did a count of, all right, with this complex and the stadium, there was sufficient parking there for everybody that could come, certainly during break times, to be able to park at the high school and use the facility. Now, obviously, a lot of that gets into, if you're, you know, this is a kind of an operational thing. If a game or multiple games get scheduled the same night, the high school doing something, yes.
If you have softball there, you've got baseball there, and soccer there, interact, and art station, and art building there. If you have Pascal's Book of Legends, that's a lot of parking.
That's right, that's right. So yes, if, if there was a time where every venue was doing something, then you might start to learn into a parking issue.
Let me help you out right there just a little bit on your parking. There, there will be times that we're playing on those fields, that the high school is playing baseball at the same time. It will be nice if that will happen. So, you know, that, that'll take up a good bit of the parking, especially if we got all the fields playing at, at the same time.
You know, when y'all look at numbers, y'all believe that, look at lot.
No, no, we did, yeah, back over there towards market, we did not. That's pure, good point. Yeah, no, we looked at just everything, kind of their north of the stadium and, and really east of the greens.
And so there's, I know in the original renderings, where the old, I guess, the cut-through street between Jackson and Convent, that area where the old beauty salons used to be and so forth, that's not going to be parking anymore at this point?
That's right, that's right.
So it is.
There will be entry there, but there will not be paid parking inside.
Councilor Jones, boy, I mean, is that an option if we can't observe at this point or is it just going to be?
Yeah, I mean, no, no, I mean, that's kind of part of what we're here to say, all right, let's, what are we trying to add into the job? So no, if the desire is, we want to put that northwest parking in, we'll figure out what the budget is and then we'll work on the plan.
Where the old southern, sheer southern style, right there, that originally was supposed to be parking. But like you said, they took it out, so it needs to be, we need to review that because there's no parking on that old north side of the building. I mean, like, I understand what baseball's saying, but if you got people, if we have entrance coming in there, but we don't have parking, that means you're going to have to go all the way back down to Market Street, get out of Market Street, or cut through the cut-through and come all the way around to get to Tucker Street. I just see that. I don't see that, I don't see that as practical, to be honest, y'all. My partner needs to be, we need to look at, we need to, we need to get the budget for that.
Oh, I hear you. You know, we were, we were.
Oh, no, 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 I know, but, but there's a lot of things that happened since then because of Councilor Jones, I thought about that later. We got some, we got some tax money coming down, we're generating extra revenue.
And then we kind of scaled it back.
At this iteration though, I mean, but two, five.
Well, I, I'm just talking about before, right now, it's all dirt. I mean, that's all I'm saying. I don't want us to go putting grassy down if we're going to put shit, I mean, even if we put gravel parking in there, it's temporary.
You're definitely, you're right. I don't know if we're going to have parking there by March. I mean, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. We, we're here. I don't know how, what we can do, even in a temporary type aspect because there's a lot of anticipation for this March fourteenth. I think you're going to see more people in town. And I can already tell you, you're going to fill up every piece of property on that south side. It's just going to happen. There's too many people in town want to come out and see this now. When we're going to have boys and girls softball and the first, you know, opening ceremonies that's ever happened in the history of the two sports. When we're going to have boys and girls softball and the first, you know, uh, opening ceremonies that's ever happened in the history of the two sports in this town. And then you've got all the people in town that are going to want to come see the newplex, we got to figure it out quickly.
Well, here, here's what we can do, we can go back and see what our, what we were holding for the cost of that paid. We can tell you what the cost of a gravel parking lot would be, and you guys can look at that and we can talk, list that in discussion.
My recollection, Jay, I mean, that area, one of the things that, that leaned towards not doing it immediately was we weren't talking about a whole lot of spaces between, you know, there was a parking spot as I envisioned it in that southwest corner. And, and as I recall, it was maybe forty tops, it wasn't that many.
I, I can very clearly remember Steve was like fifty to seventy-five, but I'm, fifty, seventy-five is better than what we got now.
I'm not, I'm not trying to argue about the numbers, but it was just.
Oh, no, I think, I think it was a huge parking lot, I agree with you.
Yeah.
It was just more than what we had, I'm just trying to, I had some people talking.
Yeah, I, I know.
You know, it's going to be just like it is on football night, you're going to have people parking up and down the road.
Yeah.
And you're not going to be able to, you go to every other sportsplex, Ocean Springs and everybody, and it's just something you're going to have to deal with. But I mean, we, it's definitely an idea to try to give you as much parking as we can.
Well.
Parking lot, let's not compare it to Ocean Springs. Because that's not the most.
Yeah, I don't think you have to park three miles from this.
Well, you know, the part, two sides that I'm trying to alleviate is, I don't know who owns the shopping center where the pharmacy and all that goes in there. You start taking up their parking for their customers by baseball, those people are going to be down here to see y'all. They're not going to come to see me, they're going to come see the council.
I agree.
Because they're going to say you didn't put no parking and everybody's taking out parking. So, that's all I'm trying to alleviate, at least if we have something going temporarily, at least we can be able to say, we'll try and, we'll, we'll work, we'll do better. But, you know, I don't want to see upset people, I don't want to see tow trucks down there towing cars off. I don't want to see any of those types of things because it's just going to be problems for y'all.
I'm with you.
And the other thought is, you don't, you don't want to have, the fire trucks walk in.
And that's where I'm getting, uh, the citizens that live on that east end of Tucker. They, they are constantly worried about it.
Yeah.
Y'all is being destroyed.
Oh, yeah, and they've been in the middle of two big construction jobs, yeah, so it's been tough on them, I know that.
So you'll give us the number as well?
Yeah, I would, I would.
We also have an option, there's some areas on Tucker and on Ninth that we could do some parallel parking pretty easily.
That's right.
Back from sidewalk out the road, we've got over ten feet, there could be some parallel spots put in, that is the parking, pretty relatively.
That would be nice, I would like to see that.
All right, so, um, I guess any other things on that, sort of, you know, certainly struggle. Our goal really is to kind of hear everything and anything and let's get it on the list and decide what we, what actions we need to take. So, um, we've gone through signage, you know, we're talking about parking. Um, one of the ideas that, um, I suspect may, may warrant a bit better discussion is the, I mentioned the to be determined on the championship field. So, uh, I'll kind of reset where we are, um, what's in the contract now. So every field, including the championship field in the original contract, had bleachers and shade structures over the bleachers, which were on the baselines. Um, we talked several months back about, you know, ways to sort of enhance the championship field, make that field feel a little special, more special. So we came up with two things that could be done. One is a wrapped around shade structure that looked more like a stadium style, um, setup. And then we came up with a concept to just essentially put some tiered seating in there and, and real stadium seats. Um, and we talked about that a few months ago, said we were working on pricing. We've since come back to, um, the contractor got pricing on that, so that certainly is a cost impact if we decide to move on that. So I'll put that information in front of you. So certainly our options are leave it like we've got it right now and we move forward with that. Um, we, or we can decide to move forward with that. That concept right now, and so back.
No, I like the idea, but I, well, I didn't like that ninety thousand dollar price then.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so the add, the added cost to put that shade structure and the seating around just that championship field, the added cost to that sixty-five thousand dollars.
We're paying that thirty percent.
That, yes, yes, that's right, that's right. We get credit for what was in there, you're right, so the total cost of that enhancement is, is ninety thousand.
When you say stadium seating.
So stayed like, just chair back seats like you would have, just like you did in minor league, major leagues.
What, what is that in that?
That's right, that's right. And so the idea was you just had kind of two, two concrete, you know, arena style se- seats. And then you've got those, um, sitting around the backside, kind of behind home plate and around the side.
How many seats is?
Sixty, sixty-two.
And then you still, beyond that, towards the dugout, you've still got open area that's underneath the shade structure for this general seating. You have to bring a lot of character, something like that.
Shade structure, so it's all group?
It, no, it's fatter group, so that's.
So Kevin, how much trouble would it be to add that in, I like, to get a tank?
It's going to get tough because of how the foundations have got to go in, um, and getting access into it once we start pouring concrete out.
Well, I mean, I've been thinking about this, and to me, I think we need to use this year to find out exactly how the, the whole field works. What's needed instead of us all rushing in there and making sure that everything that you can throw in there is in there. And finding out what we need and stuff and maybe come back. Because this year is just going to be a total rut between opening ceremonies and then you're going to go into the season, it's going to be over. And, and just try to fit all that stuff in there in two or three months is, you know, and that's the reason I asked the question about. Hey, if you look at it and we say, oh, there's nowhere to sit in the championship field, then maybe we can come back and have it next year.
The, the trouble we get into, even with the foundations, is say, we know that's a particular brand of shade to match the other ones. And if, look, if we use our current contract, we can get the same shade. But if say we come back a year now, we got to go up for a separate beer for that, it may be a different vendor, their foundation may be different. How we can make them try to make it to just to fit those foundations. Um, or you end up in a situation where you pour a big foundation concrete, you got an anchor bolt. So then you're drilling trying to epoxy large bolts into those foundations. Um, I'm not saying it can't be done, it just becomes tricky down the road to actually get what you want, um, or would need to make that work. So like I said, it can be done, and we can take some steps now to allow that down the road. It, um, it, you know, gets a little bit tricky.
So the other thing that we were just talking about, I mean, it costs, if you don't do it now, it costs you another thirty grand. Because you lose that thirty grand credit that you're giving to go ahead and do it from.
Well, if they do the original or if we just let them?
Yeah, but, yeah, and the question would become, do we not do any shade structure at that field right now? I mean, you could wait, do nothing, put bleachers in.
Yes, you wouldn't get all thirty grand, the bleachers would have to be a bit.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a pretty big upgrade for thirty-five thousand dollars, I mean, honestly. You're really trying to make a showcase, you know, championship field for thirty-five thousand dollars, that's.
Yeah, it's not thirty-five, it's sixty thousand.
Yeah.
But, but you, you've already spent thirty, right? Regardless of what you expect.
It's ninety total, we're getting a thirty-five dollar credit, it's an additional sixty-five thousand.
But I agree, I mean, I kind of like to see this done in twenty.
The, the vision of those that put in many, many hours.
Is this?
Developing this whole scene was that you had a special field that kids, when they played a championship game there, and that they're talking about it when they're here.
I'd like to see.
And that concept was, that part of it was kind of had value from everybody, there was nobody that ever said, no, that's, that's good. Everybody thought that would be really cool to have a big personality, you know, you have a rich name or, you know.
The, uh, and, and I don't disagree with all, but it's kind of like building a house, you got to put a stopping point. I mean, the original budget on these fields were eight and a half million dollars, now we got twelve of them. So, it's, there, there was only so much money in the bond money, we want to do other things in town. So if we spend sixty-five here, it's going to be something taken away somewhere else. So, I, I guess just the decision is going to have to be made.
And, and I guess, you know, just kind of frame that part of it, you know, when this gets into the schedule thing. If, if, right now, we're holding off pouring concrete around that corner based on what we decide to do at the footings. So, um, if we said, yes, go with this, then he's got to order the, um, you know, material from the, the supplier. Got to get the anchor bolts, try to get that poured in so we can get that concrete poured around the champ- that, that would not be ready for opening ceremonies. It was probably, I think they said, I forget the delivery time on that, but it was several weeks.
The championship field is not going to be ready for.
That's right, so that, so then if we do, say, hey, we just want to do nothing, we go ahead and move forward pouring concrete and.
I mean, I, I think we'll, we'll make a decision.
I mean, if they deny.
Yeah, maybe not.
Yeah, and then, yeah, so then the other option is we just wait, let you guys talk a bit more, try to, you know, do it at the next council meeting. Um, so that, I mean, that's certainly, if you guys want to kind of have some more discussion, that's certainly up to you guys.
I got, I got a quick question. Probably this championship field, are we going to be able to use this throughout the year?
Like regular season?
Like our regular season?
Yeah, I mean, from, from our, from.
I mean, I know it won't be ready opening that.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's playable like any other field, uh, you know, except the infield needs even less work to make it playable. But as far as from an operations standpoint, that's certainly a, a different question, but from our, there's no reason, there's no restriction from anybody.
Well, look, I'm just going to kind of tell y'all something real quick. I, I've actually been in contact with our district director, uh, of Cal Ripken, and I told him that our fields are supposed to be ready in March. And they're ready to go, wood should be ready to go, pretty much, especially by the end of the season when they start doing their tournaments. And he assured me that we would ha- have a really good tournament that we could put on, on that facility, as long as it's finished.
Same reason why we'd be paying.
No, yeah, exactly.
I've actually talked to him about trying to do original, I'm not going to say we're going to get original, but if he, something happens that he does get that to us, that's anywhere from thirty to forty teams coming in here in a six day period.
This is saying what does for all stars?
So, I'm going to lie to you.
So I guess, you know, if you, if you guys say, hey, let's, let's kind of pump that and talk about it, and then we'll, we'll, we'll come back and.
I don't want to necessarily do.
Okay, y'all tell me.
I will say it.
Okay.
And I, and, and I'm not that hung up on the number, I mean, if we all want it, then let's go ahead and get it, go ahead and ask. I mean, I, I, I'm for it, but I'm, I'm like you, we're, we're getting to the point of, we, we're investing.
We always intended that this was going to be the main purpose of the rec line, but now we're getting to the point, I'm starting to get worried about how much money's going to be left for some of the other things that we're doing around here. I don't think that question would be answered tonight, but I just, I, it's a concern of mine, as Scott said, the number has crept up over time. And I, I don't want us to put all of our, uh, you know, so to speak, all of our chicks in one basket. And, and soccer needs money, or basketball needs money, and, and we may not have the resources to do it. That's, that's just a concern that I have.
This is kind of like buy your future bribe, uh, engagement ring and not flipping down and then.
Anything I say responds to everything.
If they didn't use the rule, we've done spent our three month salary off here.
And you know what? It's worth it in the end, and the bad. It pays off in the end, but would it cost more to do it after? So it will cost more to do it after.
But it's an upgrade, what would be there would be nice, I mean, there's not anything wrong with what was there, but this is definitely an upgrade and, and. But, like I said, I'm not, now, can you give us a run total on what we spent the bond money?
And what's left, yeah.
And what's left? And maybe we can take it up on February fourth, February fourth will give you another round of.
Yeah, I mean, right now, as long as I think everybody hears that field on opening ceremonies is ready. You know, once you place an order with the manufacturer, we get the wheelbase then. And, and if we can get anchor bolts in, we may have most of the flatwork, but I'm certain the structure won't be up. So it's really just, you guys tell us what you want, we're going to hold off, um, on that area where we got plenty of work to do. Um, and February fourth, we'll come back and take direction.
Anybody agree with all of that?
Sure. We'll start all against that.
All right, so then, then that kind of leaves us at least the things that I had put on, on, on our agenda to make sure that we've covered. There's some outstanding items, um, and then these things really kind of cover, um, miscellaneous things that weren't, again, these aren't in the contract or in the project right now. Again, I've put that power company service cost on there, that's not issued. Um, some of these field naming, I know that's probably a broader, bigger discussion, I just know that's always been on the table. That, that's everything from individual fields to this complex and, and other opportunities. So again, just putting that out there, um, doesn't have to be answered tonight, doesn't have to be in for opening ceremonies. That's certainly up to the city to decide when and how to manage that. Um, so, so just wanted to make sure we talked about that. School boards, that is pretty critical. Um, the original plan was, so the city took the school board down, they renewed school boards. And the plan at the time they were taking down was the city to kind of put them back up. Um, the, the people that were going to put them back up aren't around any longer, so, um, we need to figure out who's going to put the school boards up at this point. Uh, we've already gotten pricing from the contractor, if y'all want the contractor to put them back up. The panels are still there for six fields, we got to get it up. Um, problem is the brackets for the, uh, uh, panels are gone, don't know where they are, couldn't find them. Um, so we've got, I mean, they got pricing to order them, and we got a price to install them, but there may be other avenues to take care of that. So we just kind of wanted to put that on the table so we could decide.
So we have enough school board, we should do all seven of the tables?
We have enough to do six field or unlikes on here.
Now, I, I've been talking to the coat representative, and he is going to replace a order for another one that matches the ones that are currently there. So, that's in order.
Now, that included the ones in the girls' field also?
Uh, the, the ones in the girls.
They had some really nice ones that y'all just recently got.
How much did we spend on?
The girls spent thirteen thousand, I think two or three years ago, we spent thirteen on.
So that what, those six aren't included or what?
Those are not included, they're, we wanted to look the same, the ones from the ball, boys' field are only two years on. I, they've been sitting up for a year, so might as well say three. Good shape, but to keep it consistent where they all look the same, the boys was the best, best route to get it.
Making the championship field different, girls a little bit better, I mean, why wouldn't you put that to give them?
Actually, mine, there is one that's bigger, um, that's one from the championship, but it's twice as big as the other.
Scott, I'll tell you this, we have the boys, we sell, how we got those school boards is we made, had a contract with coat for five years to give up, give us those school boards, so all we had to do was sell our coat products and our concessions to them. And it, I mean, that's still good, we still got at least three years left on that contract.
So they get all contracted with coat then?
So, so I guess for us at least, if we, we feel certain that we're going to put those up, the next challenge we've got to come up is who is going to put them up? And, and, and we're open to what you guys want to do, you said.
And you've already had a number on?
Yeah, yes, we do, and I'm, I don't, I've, we've not prepared any documents. I think the, the cost is twenty-seven thousand dollars to install. And that's, that's pricey, the contractor, that's actually the group that manufactured the signs.
Well, the group that originally put the, the, put the school board, supplied the school boards originally.
They gave us a price.
Gave us a price to reinstall, the problem is the old ones were, it were basically bound on old timber poles or whatever, and then their standard for limo and everything else is I-beans with concrete footings. So none of that's there, so all that has to be supplied to put these school boards back up.
Is that in my question?
Twenty-seven, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's, you know, I-beans everything. Now, uh, Stuart is going to go try to get another price to see if he can get it cheaper, and we're not, we're not bringing anything for you to decide tonight. But there, at least you know kind of where we're at, so if there's another way to do that, certainly open. Um, we'll try to go ahead and get everything ready in case you go on the fourth, move on that if we can. But, um, but we got some, there's, there's an item we can try to coordinate, figure out if that happens.
So the city doesn't have the ability to put school boards up anymore? The problem I was, I'm hearing is we'd have. The problem I was, I'm hearing is we'd have to dig holes for posts, find the metal, lay the concrete in, and, and do all the. I mean, if it was just hoisting it back up on existing, uh, poles or, or pines or wood, that'd be one thing, but, but this is more in the construction side of it. And that to me kind of leans more towards, I'd rather have either the existing contractor or somebody else come in and do that part. And while you're at it, put the scoreboards physically up there, they don't have the equipment.
So we'll, we'll come back, uh, you know, in between now and fourth, we can, uh, you know, have some discussion around the groups, and if there's a way to solve that outside of this. And if we can get a better price, we add it, and then we'll plan on trying to bring that back some forth.
Yeah, you can talk about this thing, you know.
Yeah, yeah, he's got. Um, the next couple are just things to add to the site, benches, trash cans, need to get those in. And again, not in the contract right now, uh, and, and so we gotta do everything from select what type of bench and trash set before we want. Um, first order them, get them installed, and really a big problem, the, the challenge only becomes with things like benches. Is if you want something really custom, it takes a lot to get it from the manufacturer, get it installed, get it timed. But you guys already may have a way to cure that outside of us taking care of it. So again, just, we want to discuss what type you want, how many you want, we can give you an idea where to put them. Um, but just want to make sure we get that covered sometime in the next few weeks. And, and same thing with trash cans, if you're wanting to do things that match all the way through the complex. And then the last one I know that I think comes pretty important, so, um, we, there will be signs on doors, restrooms, things like that in buildings. But, you know, if you're wanting things like weight finding signs, so whenever I come in off of Tucker Street, um, you know, do you want something like here? That says softball field one, two, three over here, baseball, your championship field here, that, that way. And so things like that, we need to kind of come up with and decide how and where to put it. So I guess the question is, is there, for us is if y'all want to provide some direction, if y'all want to say, Ben, y'all give us some ideas of what to do, we can do that.
I, I think we have to do, I, I, I think that would be appropriate.
And then beyond that, that's kind of the list of things I do, I know that, um, there was questions about, um, shelving things out. I said, should we go with, um, again, those are things, um, in my mind, we certainly want to get all that on the table, as much of it as we can tonight from everybody's directions. So at this point, for me at least, any other comments, questions, concerns, uh, certainly not for us to hear that.
Well, as far as the shelving and stuff, I, you know, is that something that in theory could be done, you know, in-house? I'm not recommending it be done, but I mean, that, that sounds like something that, whether you use some folks from baseball and softball that have some hand and man skills or. I, I mean, I'm just offering the suggestion of whether we'll be doing that, but I don't know what's needed.
I would, I don't know what's needed. I would actually have a problem with some of us going in there and doing it in a new facility like that, because what if happened goes in there or something and, and. Hit it too hard or something other than actually break a brick or whatever. I would go to somebody that knows what they're doing, go in there and put these shelving in there that are needed, then somebody from the league going in and do it. And don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm willing to go do whatever it takes to get us in there to help out, I, I would do that in a heartbeat.
Seen a lot of places, most of, a lot of folks would just use those, uh, portable wire carts and roll it down there, and then that gives you a lot more versatility and.
Is that something that the city provides that in the public?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely have to look at, I mean, probably not for my, for the four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, if you did portable wire shelving racks and stuff like that, that's got some calibre to it, so. So you, you've got like the, you've got the sinks and all that cabinet space, the, the concession window space like that? There's no mill work or anything like that in the wall, we just kind of laid out spaces for the ice machine and all that.
And that's kind of where I'm coming from, I mean, if you're talking about, I mean, whether or not it's shelving in my house, that'll be great, but you did it.
Yeah.
And it's in the laundry room, so I'm, I'm not recommending we all, hang on a second, I'm not recommending we all do it, but I'm just saying, I don't know what shelving is needed. If it's a lot and requires, like you said, mill work, that seems to be like you contract that out. If we're just talking about, I need a, a workplace so I can lay some, you know, make some hot dogs and hamburgers, that is a different story. I, I'm just, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to express here is I'm ignorant about it, so I'm, I'm just trying to find out, but.
So is there like a big aisle in there, or is it, is it just a blank?
It goes, it goes open room with, you've got, you've got the sink space and kind of that workspace for that, this thing was still. Yeah, and, uh, but then that, that's it, and honestly, the, the use is highly dependent upon the user, you know, what can we put in there varies. Baseball may want to do something different than softball.
What were you, I'm sorry ma'am, what were you gonna say?
I mean, doesn't it have to be put, I mean, like if you were gonna put a countertop there, don't you have to like brace that into the concrete? Like, that we couldn't just go in there and.
Yeah, if you want it fixed, yes, you would want it fixed right.
To do, to do it right, and it to be correct and, and.
If you want building cabinet space, then yeah, you can want anchor to the wall.
If there's food services, will you have the health department involved in any way, shape or form?
Typically other places that have a concessioneer has to have the health department involved, if it's a league or something, historically they haven't made the health department involved.
I think it sounds like somebody, whether it's the leagues, cause I, I, I can't answer this question. You know, getting on portable shelving enough, good enough, and do we, can just get some wire shelving? Somebody's gotta be able to tell us what you need it.
We're, we're more than happy to take each individual league, walk through the space, I know a, a few from softball that just looked at the space for the first time yesterday. And so if, if they want to come sit down with us and say, we'll sit in the space and go, okay, what do you think you want? We'll certainly work with them to figure out how to get it, and then go from there, certainly happy to do that.
Mike, can you guys take the lead on that and get with the leagues and find out what we need to do to allocate the concession stand?
Have we made a decision?
I don't have a problem going down there and looking at it.
I guess I'd say the two questions. I mean, that's. Okay, fair enough.
So that was like another question, I mean, as far as like the refrigerators and, and things from the league. Are we bringing those in, or are there gonna be new refrigerators put in there? I mean, I know the ice machines, but as far as us needing to know, you know, us having the moves, all of that stuff over there, is that what?
If you looked at me to tell you what you need, I don't know what you need.
I think what she's saying is more are we allowed to put in there, and I mean, you know.
So, so, so that, that leads to the discussion, one of the plans is, it's been kicked around whether the city has somebody come in and sub out the concession stand. Or whether the leagues will continue to run the concession stand. Uh, I mean, I had talked to Nikki before, and I think she had, had mentioned that, uh, you guys have gotten together and decided that y'all could. I guess we need to have a discussion, you know, uh, I mean, have y'all worked out all the details as far as, I mean, we don't want you bickering about.
We talked about what we were gonna do and how we were gonna do it, you know, and then stuff like that. As far as actually getting in there and starting to do it, we can't do it till we can actually get in the facility, you know, put things in there and move things around, and, and then we can.
Well, I was thinking more along with that, so what's the agreement, I mean, are y'all in agreement with how the, I mean, the funds are gonna be distributed across our projects? And, and, you know, the only thing we've talked is, is that you're gonna have a new facility that's gonna be great. We don't want people in there bickering and saying, oh, you know, the girls do all the work, the boys do all the work, you know, that type of stuff, so.
And I think I talked to, to the rec board and several of them are in here, and they, they've heard me talk on there. Unlike in the past, this year, Nikki has worked together really good. Our actual both boards have worked together and talked with each other better than they've ever had before. And, and I think we can continue that, and we can work together on things like that to make it work out for the better of our leagues and our kids. Because that's what we're out there for is the kids.
And I, I just was talking to Ms. Comer and, and may ask a good question. What do we do when the leagues are not, you know, in, in session or not working? I mean, what if there's a, a fall ball travel tournament here? I mean, do the leagues step up and all of a sudden they run the concession? Is that responsibility, does that responsibility fall upon us as the city? Does it fall upon the person, whoever's organizing that tournament there and renting the facility from the city? I, I, I throw that out to you, and you thought about that.
I've actually thought about it a little bit, I mean, a, and if we know it ahead of time, the leagues can get together and have people up here to actually run it for any, any kind of tournament like that.
That's not how it works, the person who puts on the tournament takes the concessions, they don't give it to you. Whoever runs the tournament takes the concessions as well. That's how they make their money.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, we would just have to, we'd have to take all of our stuff out to have them, as far as the equipment, I'm saying in there now.
And that makes the question, should, should there be your stuff, or should it be the city's stuff? And it's, I, I, I mean, I'm just throwing these ideas out here because I don't know, you know, whose stuff is it gonna be, is who has access to it and who can use it.
I can tell you right now, some of the coolers that would come in to have, have the drinks and stuff like that, it would probably come from Coke. They would actually belong to Coke, and they would be in there, anybody could use them as far as the coolers. The freezers would be ours, cause I think y'all have one, and I know we have one, uh, anything like that. I mean, it's just a freezer, you can put stuff in it, but if we had anything out of there, we would have to remove it and put it somewhere else if they brought in an outside tournament. I don't have a problem doing that. I mean, the only other, the only other option you have really is, is to go back in there and the city actually put somebody in there to run it your way. You know, whatever's going on up there, oh.
I mean, that's how we make money to buy.
But we do make some money off of our concessions for our leagues. And you take that away from us, you're taking money away from us.
I, I can see, past sports complexes, I've been involved with, the tournaments made their money off gate fee. And then they're, they have their vendors set up for selling equipment, jerseys, entry fees. I can tell you, our concession didn't give them any money, that was their money they made off of it. Now, did they give the city that I was with fifteen percent back from the tournament? Yes, we made a profit, but the tournament directors didn't make anything off the concession. So, that's just from my experience.
Have a concessioneer, concessioneer gets, uh, most of the money off the concession, city gets a percentage of it back.
Yeah.
On anything. No, they have, uh, that practice and stuff like that. But, but I mean, the contracts set up. You know, if the contracts are set up to where the tournament, you know, if it's written in that, hey, whoever's gonna be operating the concession stands is gonna be one league, that's golden, that's a concession. I mean, like, like Mike mentioned, most of the tournaments, those promoters, they're looking at just putting the tournament on. And they gotta maintain fields while they're there, they gotta maintain parking, maintain access, um, and then they're taking your registration fees and whatever they get from vendors. And they, they really, uh, say take up a percentage, they don't want to fool with the concession stands, they've got too much else to fool with to, um.
It's not worth their while.
Yeah, it's not worth their while, and that's one of the things the city actually makes some money off of.
And see, the, the tournaments that, that I've been to, they, they come with the crew and they do that, they do it all, except for the, the show net.
I, I think it's different, different places.
Show net, they had a lot.
They, they sell a whole set.
I've talked to the Gulfport, the Springfield, and they contract theirs, they contract their concessions out, they have their own concession.
That's for league games too?
Yes.
During league games?
Yes, yeah, league games also.
Vendor, suppose, he's, there's one vendor that does all, not just the sports play, whatever, all the sports, uh, baseball and softball fields there in Gulfport.
Does the league get it cut all the time?
The guy that runs it gets a part, and the city gets a part. So the recreation, the, the sports, recreation department gets a part.
Currently with the league running concessions, do, do y'all give anything back to the city? For y'all's concessions?
No.
So, I mean, it sounds to me like you could structure it to where you have a concessioneer come in, instead of giving fifteen or twenty percent back to the city, and give it back to the leagues and y'all's.
Why wouldn't we do that and provide the equipment though, that is gonna stop the, the concessions?
You're gonna have to, you're buying the equipment anywhere.
No. If I'm not getting the money, I'm not gonna agree to buy the equipment. I mean, why would I do, I mean, why would I do that? No, no, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not.
If that tournament's teaching coming in, then your equipment's not gonna be used with it.
I, 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 I mean, I'm just, I'm just making a very clear statement that I, I don't see any need for us to invest in equipment that's going to be used by others. That will be a money-making revenue, that's using public funds so a private organization can make income. I'm, I'm not gonna agree to that.
I'm going to write that statement down, cause I'm going to repeat it back to you, probably in just a little while. But, you're going to do that because you're going to invest in the children of this community.
I, I, I've already agreed to invest up to twelve million dollars to do that. My point here though is, we're talking about an income generating operation now. And I can't condone investing, if the city gets a portion back, excuse me, let me finish. If the city gets a portion back, I get it, because that's our equipment. But I can't condone giving equipment that's going to be used exclusively by private operators to generate, to generate their own income. I just can't.
He, he not talking about, he, he's not talking about, he's talking about the concessioneer.
The, uh, but in the past, y'all have provided your own refrigerator, you've provided your hot dog warmer, and your, all this kind of stuff. So, it's somewhat of a meat point, I think they have most of this stuff.
We do have.
Yeah, we just don't move everything over. Yeah, he's not talking about, we just need all this stuff to put it.
That's what we need to do, is figure out what kind of inventory y'all had, and if there's any shortages, we'll figure out that to do.
What she's saying is they need some sort of countertops to put the stuff on. That's, we have everything to do everything, it just needs something to set it on.
Yeah, we just wanna transfer our.
So, in my opinion, that's our responsibility to, to put some kind of island in there.
So if we want to get with Mike, and then we'll get with each league, see what equipment they've got, go through the space, kind of do an inventory layout, and then see where we want to put some cabinet space, and we can, again, that's something kind of, because.
If we build this facility, it's our responsibility to have some type of workspace in there for whoever goes in there. And if we allow, whether it be parents or someone that we allow to come in there and, and contract with us. Whoever it is. We invest because we make it a workable space, and we're doing that because we're doing it because it is a space that we've created for the children of this community. And that's why we do it, Steve.
I, I, I'm not arguing with any of that, my point was, I don't want to buy equipment that's going to be used by a private vendor to generate revenue. If it's the league, if it's the city, I get that, but, you know, I've made, the devil's in the details here, that, that's all I'm saying, and I'm not.
Are you thinking about which, which, which place you want to buy, private, whatever?
I simply made a point, just to simply.
You're gonna be poking out both sides of your mouth when we discuss something else?
If you want to have that discussion now, that's fine, but I'm trying to just throw out ideas here and concerns. So we can raise these issues amongst each other as we approach the season beginning. I'm not trying to come down with edicts and ultimatums about what we need to do or not, but I'm just trying to raise points of concern as we move forward. So we don't go down a path that we may not be able to reverse course on.
Okay, so if you truly believe that, you have to believe it all the time, you can't believe it here and not believe it somewhere else. So is it a principle that you truly believe in, or are you just throwing it out here because you don't want it?
I am simply raising a concern, that's all I'm doing here, okay?
So I wrote it down, so I'm gonna repeat it back, I, I wrote it down, word for word, and I'm going to repeat it back to you when you try to do it somewhere else later, remember that.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the league, I wanted to ask about scheduling. Are y'all also working together on scheduling?
We're working together on scheduling.
Schedule, practice, the whole nine yards.
Okay, practice I've got written down, so, I know a lot of times when you have the new. Okay, practice I've got written down, so, I know a lot of times when you have the new fields, you try to reduce the number of practices. If we maintain the girls' fields for practice facilities, can we reduce the usage of, of the new home?
As of right now, I mean, so we're not gonna be able to get on till we start playing anyhow, so we're taking all of our practices with the girls, and we're gonna introduce those at the girls' field, we're, we're at the twelve street complex and Lewis Street.
I mean, anybody else having concerns?
Well.
I mean, I know the long-term plan is for us to, to do away with the girls' field, but, but in the short term, I'll, maybe they can play.
There's nowhere else for us to, there's not enough room for everybody to be able to practice if we weren't able to do it on the girls' field, I mean, I don't know where you would put everybody, I have no idea. Even without the girls, I mean, even when that wasn't available, there's never been enough room. And so many, only so many places have lighting, only so many places have backstops, and then you got, you know, there's just not much of an option if you were to take that, even though it's not, you're still lacking with it, you definitely would be in a bind if you didn't have it.
There again, Scott, as long as we're working together, and I know we can work together, because we, we can do it.